You need to flip the switch?
Yeah.
Not that anybody's in here. Okay, well, where are we starting here? We got, we have gotten through the whole binder, but Tammy had a list of things we needed to revisit.
Yeah, so ambulance was the first thing.
But ambulance is not done yet till tonight? Is that?
We can talk on some of it.
Is that what I understand?
Or we can try and do other stuff and see if we have time to.
Well, I keep emailing you and he doesn't email me back.
For what?
To update his numbers.
Yeah, he, yeah, they did nothing, I should say nothing, it wasn't finished.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get done, um, but what numbers were you asking him to update?
Well, like the salary and that's still at seventeen percent, eh?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get through all that and that's all discussion and come here with that. We got through part of it, but I would imagine tonight will be.
What was the hang up there? Like it with the finishing things? Or is that too much to get into?
No, I mean, I think you could kind of say.
Well, there was.
There the whole time, but.
Yeah, and there was, I mean, there was a lot of good conversation, but some of it was around, um, and some of the hang up was one compare, what are we kind of comparing to? And like Sandy Vaskey had asked questions about like the, the other staff numbers, their actual wages. That was one of the things that was talked about, but a lot of that is overtime. I mean, it varies based on each person, but.
Right.
A fair bit of that for some of them is overtime. And what are our expectations or what is, um, actually needed from the director of the department of how many hours should you be doing? I mean, we've had a position that has been open for a while. We have had some, and Phil said it in here, um, we've had applicants at the EMT certification level, but we haven't hired them hoping that we'd get a paramedic. Well, at the same token, all the rest of our staff, um, that's EMTs right now is currently in, of course, to be advanced EMTs and there's one that's going to, is working on their paramedic. So, I mean, we've talked about training and developing that talent in-house and developing it with local people. And if we're not picking up somebody that's able to do some of that work and, and help fill the schedule, then that translates to other people having to put in overtime, whether it's the director or not. Does that really get factored into what the wage should be or whatnot? And, and then there's also the discussion, which we really didn't finish the discussion on this, but, um, with Phil being an EMT right now, he is also in the class to be in advanced. So, there's the piece of, okay, you talk any percentage wage that say everybody gets if we're talking four percent or whatever. But then there's also the rest of the staff will get a certification increase or a wage increase with the certification change. Currently, he wouldn't be part of that, but should he be? That was, that was one of the things that was being discussed and, um, we just, we didn't get done with all that, but there was, there was some kind of, I don't know, generally I'd say specifics about workload and some of that stuff that we were talking about, so. I don't know if it's any different or more, you can add your time there, Amber, but.
Not really, because when I was there, we were just mainly talking about the others, not really Phil, the staff. And, um, I just kind of explained why we were trying to be consistent mainly is just what I said. I didn't really.
Yep.
Offer much as to what they should be wanting or, or asking for. I just said, this is why we've been consistent.
Yep.
Sure.
Maybe.
And I mean, we can talk about ambulance if you want, otherwise we can.
Well, no.
Throw our other ones and then.
We'll, we'll go to the other ones and we can always do ambulance next week too, since you'll be done hopefully.
I would show.
I think I'm gonna send out an email in September this year reminding them that it was, reminded to me that by Iowa code, they have to have their numbers to the board of supervisors by January fifteenth.
Oh, that's probably be a good reminder for all department heads.
Well, none of the other, well, most of the others don't have a problem, but I think, I think, um, some of them that have boards, advisory boards, whatever, um,
They plan ahead.
Need to be planning ahead for those things, so we're not sitting at this February eleventh.
And not done?
Yeah.
Well, and the backside of that is, I mean, whether you talk about wages, percentage, or health insurance direction or any of that, I mean, some of that was weighed on to see where we would start from here, so.
Yeah, but that's different, that, that's, I mean, that's different. This is department heads are supposed to have.
And we've had the wage thing figured out for a while.
Yeah.
Right, but, I mean, it's six of one, half dozen of the other.
But, well, so what's next then?
E nine one one.
Okay, they're done, right?
Josh had a simple meeting last week and the sounds of it across the hall.
Yeah, yeah, I mean. Yeah, there is no changes, uh, approved, that was presented.
Okay.
If you guys got any questions in there, I can, I can answer it. Derek did a pretty good job answering the questions. One of the discussions that we did have and we do need to have is.
Rent.
Rent, because I don't know that we ever had a line item in there for it. Can I talk to Derek about that?
No, it's on the list of things to talk about too, isn't it? Yep.
That's a what?
On the list of things to talk about too.
It is, yeah, for sure.
What we're gonna charge emergency management, E nine one, E nine one for rent, yeah.
Now, would it be, um, would it be, uh, cause rent, utilities, all that has been discussed. Would it be out of line to do the cost allocation plan kind of the way we do it over there? So that it's, this is the way it is?
So, what I explained it to them and kind of the basis of what I got with our discussion the last time. How it would work is we would take the bills in here, um, and we're gonna figure out the averages of what it is and then divide that out by the percentage. They, they discussed whether that was agreed upon or not, but, um, obviously that part will need to get hashed out a little bit more to figure out, is it truly going to be forty-five, forty-five, ten? If it is gonna be forty-five, forty-five, ten, then we know, you know, basically we can take what we give for the average for, you know, the twelve month year, um, what it would be monthly and then split it out by, based on those percentages.
You, you, you're not gonna be able to do that. When you do the claim, you're gonna have to do each claim split out by that amount. Otherwise, you're gonna be having checks written for incorrect amounts that.
I don't know if the county offered budget contract.
Yeah.
Well, because like right now, who pays the utilities that comes out of the?
Supervisors, yeah.
Yeah.
So then, if we did it that way, each entity would have to pay their share through their department?
Back to the board of supervisors.
No, you don't, you can't pay it back.
Well, that.
Claim would come in and every entity would write a check for.
It would come out of that one.
X amount of their percentage.
Yeah.
So that's gonna have to be figured out monthly, every month.
If you want it to be accurate. I don't know how else you're gonna do it.
Is there disagreement to the forty-five, forty-five, ten?
They agreed on that.
I, well, that's what I thought, but.
Who's forty-five and who's forty-five and who's ten?
EMS and EMA are forty-five and E nine one one is ten.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we had asked the department heads for those three plus the sheriff's office to get together and talk about how much they need, how much they use, whatever, and, and kind of come to an agreement. I don't know that that conversation ever really happened, um. I don't, I don't know that it's actually agreed to.
I talked to, when I was talking to members of the commission or the EMA commission, it sounded like it was a deal.
Yeah, I think.
Like that they had discussed it or, or no, or I've.
I, I don't think between.
Sounded like they were waiting on us.
EMS and E nine one, I don't think those have discussed it and agreed to it.
EMS and E nine one weren't in that discussion at all?
No, I think that conversation happened at the EMA commission before the department heads got together.
Well, I think the important things to remember is the, yeah, the emergency management person is the coordinator for all the emergency services, you know, so even though they're different entities, she coordinates things and she has to be aware of everything that's going on. So, for it to start at the EMA, maybe that's logical, but yeah, they have to have, I mean, they have to be in agreeance, they come out of separate budgets, but what's the hang up?
I don't know, I just, I thought they had all thought.
Like, why, I mean. And why is the big deal?
Well, and it was discussed there that we need, maybe need to just have a meeting here, joint meeting with all of them and just lock the doors and no one leaves until we're done.
You mean like with the, those individuals, not the, not the every commission?
Not the whole commission, no, 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 no.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
Just with the department heads.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, and, and it obviously wouldn't be approved until they took it back to their commission, but we do need to have that discussion.
For EMA that would matter, but for the other two, well, E nine one one it would matter too, yeah.
E nine one one would, yeah.
Feels like the sixth time, EMA is Emergency Management Agency, which is.
Carissa.
Carissa.
EMS is Emergency Medical Services, which is the ambulance. And I know what E nine one one is, but what, what are we splitting up?
Utilities.
Of what?
Uh, the emergency complex.
On Philip Street.
UVC building.
UVC building.
And it's, yeah, utilities, rent, whatever, I mean, we're gonna have repair costs at some point in time, whether it's now or into the future, I mean, there's a lot of expenses there besides just utilities.
So, what does E nine one one get out of that building?
They have a vehicle stored there plus just a small amount of equipment. Um, they also use that for the E nine one one, uh, commission meetings. Uh, but that's about the most, and that's why they agree that.
Who makes up the E nine one one commission?
So, I'm our representative, um, the fire chiefs.
Okay.
And the EMA commission, or the, um, the Carissa, yeah.
So, how, how many?
Recording, there we go.
How many does that entail then?
It's like ten people.
And everybody has an equal vote?
Yes.
That's fine, I just, I know we've been through this before and I apologize, but.
No, it's not.
Takes a couple times to remember.
Yeah, it might take more than a couple even.
So, what I'm hearing is they haven't discussed it all together, even though we asked them to, how many? A year ago or whatever that was?
Probably a year ago, yeah.
It's like, almost a year probably, yeah.
So, we just need to have them in here so we can.
Yeah.
Talk and get it done.
Yeah.
We need to put it, just have it say, let's.
What are they doing this afternoon?
Cause they gotta work together, because they all affect one another.
Yeah.
They have got to work together on.
So, what are they doing this afternoon? Oh.
I think probably.
Yeah, we can do something.
Well, Derek's right there, so we can ask him, but the other two, we don't, I don't know. I think we'd have to have some on the agenda, because there is gonna be decisions made there, so.
Right, and again, we're dealing with the budget that has to get done.
So. Right, so next Tuesday, we're gonna look for them to come in, can we see? Cause we do need to get that squared away.
Yeah.
You want me to send them an email, see if they're available?
That'd be wonderful.
Well, next Tuesday, we also have at one o'clock in the afternoon, the solar.
Solar.
And then earlier we discussed having something else in the afternoon, what we said again. I don't know. As we discussed it, we said, well, we're gonna be here next Tuesday afternoon, so we might as well.
My gal, my galway.
Oh, yeah, there was, that's what it was.
And maybe he's available in the morning, we'll have to see what schedule looks like.
See what his day is like.
But that was, that was the other thing that we said we, we'd be here later if it needed, if it was needed.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause I knew you mentioned it, but I couldn't remember what it was.
Okay.
Okay, so. E nine one one's good, for budget except for the rent thing.
At that point, then we're gonna decide rent and the utilities? Or, or what are we gonna decide at that meeting? Rent, utilities and?
Yeah.
We, we need to decide, I think, going into the meeting, what we're thinking too. I mean, don't we, as far as rent? If we're gonna charge rent, I mean, I don't wanna show up at the meeting and, well, we don't know, I think.
Yeah.
Is that rent gonna go into a certain pot so that we have money for repairs if, if down the road something goes wrong?
I would hope.
It should.
Well, considering it's for that building, would that come back into ours and be considered?
You don't have a revenue fund in the supervisors, it'd go back into the general fund.
It'd go back into general?
Yeah, but then we would, we would probably wanna budget that same dollar figure or whatever on the expense side in like a contingency fund that.
No, the expense would come out of each of their line item, each of their department.
No, he's talking about for us, for building repairs and stuff, if we needed to do building repairs.
Yeah, you guys already have that line item.
Yeah, but we could increase it by that dollar amount.
The dollar.
We don't have it under supervisors, do we, or do we, we do have that line item, okay?
Building repair means. If I've got the supervisor, no, that's.
There would have to be a revenue item if that's specific to what it's going to be used for. It doesn't have to be this budget year, but after the, you know, the rent is figured out, then next year when we're doing it, it could be built that way, I think, going forward.
Yeah, we've got five thousand in building repair and maintenance currently for the year.
Expense.
Expense, yeah.
Yeah, but if it's not.
No, that's courthouse.
But that's probably not a contingency fund where it stays there, is it? That's just an expense line, so if we don't, if we don't have it specifically designated, it'll just, if it doesn't get spent, it just goes back into the general fund and that doesn't accomplish the purpose of.
But that's just an expense, that's not a revenue.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm aware of that.
But you can earmark it.
That's, that's referring to basically.
You can earmark it so that it's, it's not, so it's restricted. So it's set forth for this purpose, it's restricted and it's not gonna just go into the general fund.
And then ten years down the road when we have to replace a roof, there's probably something from that there.
Yeah.
We'd still have that building ten years from now, you know? That's another day conversation.
Yeah.
I heard you were into that.
Well, I mean, uh, yeah, I think that the building can serve a good purpose, I think that we're just not very.
You could do an excellent lumberyard.
Used to anyway.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, if we're gonna, if, if we're gonna have it in the budget, yeah, I think it needs to be designated, so it's not just a.
Well, why, well, yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't make any sense to do that.
Because it could honestly, could it be a, I don't know if that's right, but could it be a department? Kinda like the election center is, and it has its own budget as far as, you know, utilities and that stuff. And then we also have the revenue side, so then we can put money into that and restrict it.
With it being owned by the board of supervisors, how would that even work?
I mean, the election center is too, but, or it's owned by the county, so.
But it has its own separate fund?
The election center doesn't have its own.
Yes, no, it's all fine, but it has its own department.
Or, yeah, yeah.
Elections, yeah.
Not, but, yeah, a department.
I think in the department number is the, yeah, nevermind.
Yeah, no, department. Then it's all kept separately in its own little.
Yeah.
Somewhat pot of money, even though it really isn't, but then we could keep track of everything a little bit separately, then lumping it into the supervisors, I mean, if you wanna do it cleanly.
You're saying like we have election center budget doing a label, UVC budget, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever you wanna call it, building complex, training complex.
Training, yeah, train, emergency training complex or whatever.
Emergency.
And have that as its own budget.
Yeah, mhm, have its own budget.
Good.
Yeah.
We certainly have other simple budgets like that.
Because then the revenue could go into that department and then we'd be able to, you know, maybe not necessarily spend it, but be able to restrict it to, um, only improvements down the road.
Building expenses. Right, right.
That's probably not something Tammy wants to do this year, that was the.
Whatever you want.
I mean, there wouldn't have to be that many line items in it, it would be building, repair and maintenance.
No, no.
Instead of being in the supervisors, it would be in that department, utilities.
Right. Just the thing, the things that are already in the supervisor budget.
For that.
For the building, you just move to, to the building.
Yep.
And add rent as a revenue and I don't know how much other change you'd need to make.
Yeah.
Well, that building repair and maintenance line item from the board of supervisors is like our share for the courthouse, right? Is that how it is right now?
No, no.
Or that, that line item is strictly for that building?
For that building.
Just for that building.
Okay, cause I saw.
Courthouse, courthouse budgets for the courthouse.
Okay, so we had twenty thousand used out of that line item in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then another five thousand used twenty-three, twenty-four. What was that for? That was.
That was for things that were done for the.
Yeah.
What, when did the?
Those could be crossed.
When the county buy that building, was, how many years ago was that?
Twenty-one, wasn't it?
Ah.
With COVID money, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think twenty-two.
I wanna say it was twenty-two, um, because it was, it was just before you two got on.
I know it was kind of a hot topic right before we got on, yeah.
It was.
And you could crosswalk those account numbers, I think Tammy, if those are the right words, so that that history goes with it, if it was all for that building, then that history can go with those numbers.
Sound good? Okay.
Is that the direction we want Tammy to go? I think she wants, needs to have a definitive answer on that.
I'm just doing it.
You're just gonna do that way?
Yeah.
I think that's, yeah.
I don't see.
I think I may get to.
And really, what would you need for account numbers? Building, repair, maintenance, contingency and utilities? Is that it? I mean, honestly?
Insurance?
No, because that's all in.
No, it's all, it's all coming out, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, what's all in the election center? Let's just look at that. Yeah, so, damage, supplies.
Supplies.
But.
We wouldn't need that.
But we wouldn't need that, because do they provide their own supplies?
Yes, that's their, yeah. Yes, they would be their own supplies.
Who cleans the building?
She's supposed to.
Yeah, she does it right now.
Okay, so then, okay, so then.
Will it not have nothing to do with that building?
Fuel, which that's my guess.
That's utilities.
Yeah, utilities, and so these two line items, building repair. Well, no, because there's a specific number for fuel and a specific number for utilities.
Yeah, you can't combine them.
Yeah, so just keep them separate and then building, repair and contingency. And if you wanna add one for building improvement, you could, so it's in there, you just wouldn't have to put anything in it. But, did you get all that, Tammy? I was just kinda talking, but not really necessarily giving the direction, but. And that, you know.
Oh, I think that's a good idea, I've thought about that too.
We just have to decide on the numbers to put in, which we should be able to kind of figure out. So, Tammy, why could, uh, why couldn't they pay back the county? Like, could they, could they write a check to the county for the utilities? Instead of you guys doing it every month, it's once a year, you said no, can they not?
Well, it's just gonna be, you mean, write, write a check, but where's it gonna go?
To, well, it would go into the revenue of that number of, of that department.
I think they should be able to, we reimburse second year owes for fuel expense every month, I mean, I don't.
So like instead of figuring it every month, divide it at, say in, I don't know, May, so that they pay in, out of that year's budget and it goes back into that account number. It's just coming from eighty-two thousand, sixty thousand and oh, three thousand, is that Phil? And then it's once a year, and then you could just keep track of it on the spreadsheet and then divide out, okay, they paid forty-five percent back, they paid forty-five percent back, they paid ten percent back of a total amount, couldn't that work?
I suppose it could.
Or do we just do?
It's just cleaner to have it come out of their account every month.
Or do we just do their cost for the new budget is equal to what the previous fiscal year closed at? So they could write a check in July or August or whenever and pay based on last year's cost. I mean, it's not exact apples, apples, but year over year, it'll go and take care of itself.
I don't think you wanna do it that way, I think you need to be consistent, more consistent than that.
Just remember when we had the fax machine and we divided out the cost.
Yeah, I don't.
We divide, and that was all general basic and we just kinda divided it out, but we divided it out, I thought, at the end of the year and said, okay, you owe this, you owe this, and you owe this.
Well, and that's where, even if they paid it in the following fiscal year, if you only make one payment, probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference to me. That's one payment, it'd be one entry, I think that'd be simpler, but.
It's still three entries, cause it's three different departments.
Right, but it'd be one entry per calendar year instead of every month times three departments, that'd be twelve instead of thirty-six. I, I don't know, I don't know why we couldn't do it once a year, whether it was paid in July or August, I don't think really makes that big of a difference.
I, I don't care, I just, I, I mean, I just think for everybody, it would be simpler to do the once a year, but, you know, I'm not doing the, we're keeping either.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Us. I would, I guess whatever's, whatever's simplest, that can be easily understood by all parties, I, I would think doing it once a year is pretty simple, but if it's easier to do it month to month, then do that, I, as long as it gets, gets done.
Yeah, because the bills are gonna come to Tammy.
Right.
And it's her department gonna have to be separating it out.
Right.
So, if she wants to do it every month.
More power to you.
Do it every, do it every month, I mean, honestly, doesn't.
I, yeah, I, I don't think there's anything bad about doing it, well, every month, it's just extra workload in my opinion.
Yeah, I kinda think so too, but like I said, it's Tammy and her staff that has to do it, so.
Well, I think she's more worried about at the end of the year, the, the number's not lining up right or something.
But why wouldn't it?
No, because I mean, the bills, the utility bill is gonna be different month to month. One month it could be thirty-six bucks, another month it could be a hundred and two.
Right, but if you keep track of that, you, and you know what it is, at the end, at the end of the year, whenever we end the year, we might end it in, you know, May first or June first, whatever, it.
I mean, I'm.
It should just be a percentage of that total.
I'm not an expert on accruing and all that sort of stuff, but I would think if you run your, your year for the cost the same way as a fiscal year is and you make one payment in July, you accrue that one entry times three departments, you accrue it back and say these were last year's costs and it's done and over with, I mean.
Yeah.
Otherwise, sometimes depending on where the calendar falls, sometimes we have special claims that we do right at the end of June to get certain bills paid right before the end of the year, it could be done at that point in time too.
Well, then they wouldn't have to accrue it either, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, so that, so that might solve the accruing process, but otherwise it'd be.
Are we just forgetting this year? I mean, it's just the way it is, it's just happened and just move forward?
Well, and, and maybe that's kind that not direct. Well, and, and maybe that's kind that, not directly with what I said before, but you could correlate that and say, okay. Look at the end of June, what were our costs for last year and this is your bill for next year.
Well, that's true.
And to some degree, yeah, you're staggered a year off, but at least you have actuals that you're basing it off of.
Oh, you're running to, well, they've already approved their budgets, not to say they can do a budget amendment to make that adjustment, but.
You can be over on line items, you just can't be over on the total item. I wouldn't think any of their budgets are gonna be that tight.
Yeah, as long as the bottom line's not over, they're fine.
And it would never be an issue. Yeah, it shouldn't, we shouldn't be pushing anybody into a dyed up budget by a little bit of money for utilities.
Well, no, I'm thinking. I'm thinking though, uh, cause E nine one one does not have a line item for utilities for building expenses or anything.
You can always add that though.
Right, through a budget.
And you don't.
It, you can always, it, no, you can add the line item and you can even let that line item go over since it's zero right now.
No.
Even if it goes over by two thousand dollars, as long as their bottom line is not over.
So you can just add a line item without having to do hearing or anything like that?
Yeah, yeah, you can add a line item, yeah.
Cause the line items are just basically tracking and say, what are these expenses going towards for a topic?
It's, yeah.
So that doesn't change the dollar figure at all. If you needed to add ten thousand or a hundred thousand to a new line item and add it to the department as a whole, then you do a budget amendment.
Yeah.
But you could, you could break down things off like supplies. You could break it down to toilet paper, window cleaner, all, I mean, now that's obviously extreme and not necessary. But you could break them down a hundred ways if you wanted to track it separately.
Just as long as it's not like.
Just as long as it's not over in the department or the service area.
Yep.
Yeah. And if your department isn't over and nobody else's department is over, your service area is gonna be fine, so.
So, yeah, I would think they could add a line item pretty easy and if we didn't need to do a budget amendment, it'd be nine months from now probably. Or more.
Yeah, I just highly doubt they'd have to amend their budget for that, it's, we're not talking big dollars. I mean, unless the rent is gonna be big dollars, but I mean.
Utilities shouldn't be though, you know, other actuals are there.
No, no. So we've got an idea of what we're gonna do for the utilities then?
Yeah, I mean, what are you guys thinking for rent? Cause just maintenance alone wouldn't be cheap on a building like that, but. Any thoughts?
Honestly, no. I have no idea what, I mean, I don't, I, I really don't.
Having rented to others and rented myself, I'm aware of what the market is, but I, I don't know. That's, that's kind of a unique, unique building to rent too. It's not exactly renting a shop or a house or it's.
Well, and they're renting it for the purpose of Casoot County's emergency services.
Correct, and I mean, we're, we're, we're a tax, we're a taxable entity, charging another.
You know?
I, I don't know, and it, it's coming from tax money regardless, it's just a matter of where that money's gonna end up.
Yeah, because we're using, you know, like our portion, you know, of what we pay. For EMA, then they pay rent, it's coming back to us. I mean, in some sense, is it a wash? I don't know.
So I think the, the point is just making sure that we have money from their entity to help pay for building improvement, set aside for that.
For sure.
Right.
For sure, yes.
So we can get ten years down the road.
If we're not looking to make money off of it, we're just looking to maintain what we have, yeah.
Yeah, and not have a, yeah.
So, I think what we should do is say a dollar amount on what we want to see in that fund and then split it out the same way we're doing utilities, forty five, forty five, ten. So like, say if we wanted to make sure there's twenty thousand dollars in there for, you know, repairs, maintenance, um, improvements, anything like that. Then we split it out forty five percent, forty five percent, ten percent for the rent.
Yeah, go ahead.
What do you guys think about that?
And where?
Cause I'm just looking back on the budget and we, in twenty two, twenty three, I don't know what that would have been, if that was. Uh, cause I remember we had an issue with the furnace going out in that building.
Might have been with the air, air handwork.
Yeah, that's what it was. So, I mean, I'm thinking twenty thousand dollars in one shot, you know, if that happens every year, we wanna make sure that that's covered. And if it's not, then I mean, it stays in that.
Are we gonna charge EMS forty five percent rent? Being that it is a county entity.
Yeah, the, and that was one of the things we talked about, that, the ambulance.
I mean, EMA is a separate entity, legal entity, but the ambulance, the ambulance is a department of Casoot County.
Ambulance.
Separate entity, but it is.
Ambulance and sheriff.
And sheriff, and we weren't gonna charge the sheriff.
We weren't gonna charge the sheriff and we, I don't know, we talked about not charging the entities within the county, but.
Well, I don't, I, I mean, that kinda doesn't sound right, honestly, to me.
Well. And I thought we talked about it because EMS was on a separate levy, that, that it would.
I, I understand it comes from a different levy, but it's still Casoot County, you know, so I, how do you want?
Right. Right. Well, it's all tax dollars at the end of the day.
It is, it is.
Well, and the emergency management is supported by those tax dollars as well.
Correct.
The entire county, so.
Right.
It's just the concept of making sure we have funds in there for building, maintenance and repairs and stuff. And, and if they're talking a forty five, forty five, ten share for the utilities, I feel like it should be a forty five, forty five, ten share for the rent too. Cause they're saying that they use it forty five percent of the time, the other entity uses it forty five percent of the time and the third entity uses it for ten percent of the time.
And logically speaking, that makes sense for rent.
Right.
I have a thought, a couple of thoughts and I'm not sure, I tend to forget things, so. It's all tax money, but it's different, different tax paths. We can't, they, they can have their own levy, is that correct?
EMS has their own levy, EMA, uh, there's legislation.
But EMS is maxed out too.
Correct, correct.
So that guy could tell him plenty more.
No.
No, and they're getting hit at the same time, but paying for dispatch, which wasn't discussed at point four previously after the city's request. So I mean, they're getting hit by a few things at the same time.
And I'm not saying that it has to be twenty thousand split out those three different ways. We could do a smaller dollar amount. I was just going based on what we used in that building in twenty two, twenty three. Twenty three, twenty four, we only used five thousand in that.
Were you saying charging twenty thousand dollars for the year in rent and splitting that out?
And splitting that out.
Between twelve months?
Yeah. Cause I mean, that would put that, it, I mean, into that line to have there for.
Some hefty rent, but yeah.
Well, I mean, we're splitting out.
We are, business would be pretty cheap.
Yeah, and you're splitting out twenty thousand dollars between three entities and, and just rough figures, what would that come out to be?
Forty five percent of every nine thousand.
Nine, nine and two.
Yeah. For an entire year, nine thousand dollar in the rent.
Yeah, I, I, I.
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for a building of that magnitude, that's not.
Well, then that begs the question, do they need a building of that magnitude? You know, you need a building with sixteen foot sidewalls and, you know.
I know, but it's there and it's been purchased.
Who, who paid you to put the door in, the overhead door?
We did, yeah.
And that was before you were collecting, you, you had never collected rent, is that correct?
Was that our money?
That was before me, I don't know.
It.
It was our money.
No, the overhead door, what was that?
What was your budget?
You've never collected this rent before?
It's our, it, it's all our money for that building.
No, no. No, I know, but when was the overhead door? When did that, the big overhead door, when did that come in?
That was pretty quick after purchase, I would say. There was a plan of, it was the purchase price plus a hundred thousand of a list of.
Oh, okay, so the.
Various improvements and stuff that were associated with that, so that was, that was one of the first things that was done, was over a door.
The county bought that building for six hundred thousand?
Five fifty plus one fifty, I believe.
Seven hundred thousand?
What was the one, one fifty was the additions?
Six fifty. One hundred was upgrades and additions.
What was the fifty?
You said six fifty plus one fifty, or five fifty plus one fifty?
Five, five fifty was purchase, a hundred was upgrades and.
You said one fifty.
So six.
You did say one fifty, yeah.
It's one, it's, it's one hundred.
Okay, yeah, it was a hundred, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
Well.
And that's the twenty thousand, that's just the number I threw out. If you guys got other numbers, thinking of anything else?
I'm not, I, I'm absolutely not thinking anything. I, I, uh, I'm, I'm sure that. What, what's in the brick bar, the old brick building, brick part of the building?
Storage called storage.
For.
Probably mostly emergency management. I don't know what's all in there right now, but.
Christmas decorations?
Yeah, at one point we had some other things for the city about going in there, which that's a whole nother discussion too, but. Yeah, I, I don't think there's.
I think they stored splash pads up in there.
They did, and we had an agreement with them on that too.
After it was in there.
After it was in. That's the whole story too.
I mean.
And the sheriff does use that cold storage site for doing some training, cause they'll set up some false walls and stuff in there for doing training stuff too, so.
Well, the building's there, it's gonna be, you can get used if it's there.
Right, right.
The, the steel building itself, which is what we're talking about here, right?
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm not, I have no way, I'm not even vaguely familiar with buildings rent for, twenty thou, you wouldn't rent that building for twenty thousand dollars.
Not as a business, Jordan, not in close.
That's what I, I, and I, I don't know, but I, we might get feeling, I have no idea.
But I'm not looking at, at that twenty thousand dollars as a profit or anything, that's just a, a dollar amount that we can put into. We can utilize that dollar amount, put that into our building repair and maintenance.
I, I agree, yeah.
So it's not like we're trying to be competitive on the rent by any means, it's just.
No, because we don't, we also have to be.
Yeah.
But you think, you, you, you wanna be, you wanna be thinking what it's gonna cost down the road, right?
Yeah.
I mean, there.
It's a big building, it's got large heating units, it's got the air conditioning units.
And, and is it, is it thirty years old now? I don't even know, doesn't matter, but.
The building itself always older than that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Well, the new addition.
The, the metal part though.
The new addition isn't, um.
That's only gotta be within, that's, that's within my life, I, I, that was got built when I was young.
I was, I was working here because, well, Norma was here and of course we all went to the open house. So I mean, I don't know for sure, but I, I don't know if it's been thirty.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. We've been no problems with leaks and things like that so far?
No.
I haven't heard anything in the last two years.
Okay, alright.
The only other thing was someone ran into the.
Oh, yeah, somebody, somebody ran inside of the building.
That's human.
Yeah.
When it comes to snow or move or something like that, the county equipment just knows it.
Yeah, water shop takes care of that.
On any, on a, any sort of a priority basis? Do they, they, it's the last thing they do or?
I don't know what their.
Honestly, with it being an emergency, and we got the trailer and stuff, it should be a little bit higher up there, but that's, that's, yeah, it's not our, our area.
Higher.
I can't remember how we did it either, right off the top of my head, but when we were saving for the courthouse, we were putting money, setting money aside. In, in a separate fund or, I don't know, fund is the right word, but anyway, separate little pot. Then was restricted, but it, it maintained its own, it was in there, you know, that money stayed there and it had to stay in there because that's what we had earmarked it for. So, I mean, I don't know if this year's the year to do it or next year when we're doing the budget, that's when we start that. Because we actually have money that we could say, oh, okay, we took in this, that goes, let's put this amount in that.
Mm-hmm.
If we have it in next budget year for revenue, we should be able to have it as the expense to go there too, so.
Yeah. Right, but to keep, put it in its own little thing though, there's a, there's a different way to do it and. Tammy might remember how to do that, but, um, we did it for the courthouse, we'd have to do the same for that building. And earmark it just specifically for that building. You know, so that we always have a savings account going for anything that could go wrong with that building.
In, in our reality point, he's probably not too far off. Spend two hundred thousand in ten years, I bet, or over life, but maybe we get five years or ten years down the road and we say, oh, we gotta. We feel comfortable with the cushion we have and then maybe ratchet it down at that point too.
Yeah, and then just be, I mean, cause we gotta be considerate of those, you know, funds, you know, EMS, they only have so much money, period. You know, that's all they're going to get. Ninety six.
The metal part was?
That was like thirty years.
Yeah, there it is, about thirty.
So, yeah.
Pretty good.
I wasn't gonna say it, but I thought someone.
Oh, I thought that got built in a year.
I didn't think it was quite thirty, but my, my time flies.
Okay, older than me, I guess.
Ninety six would be twenty eight, almost twenty nine. So, not quite thirty, but it's getting close.
I don't wanna ma, I don't wanna make enemies by this statement, but, uh, the other thing. I don't wanna make a profit out of it either, I, I think, but. It's pretty easy to spend money that's sitting in your coffers, if, you know, for other things, but if you've got another commitment, you know, you might rein some other things in too. Type of thing, and that doesn't sound right, I guess, but, but it, it's real. I guess I don't, I asked Phil how much they used that building and, and they use it for training and.
They've got an ambulance stored in there right now.
And their extra ones.
And the car.
Yeah.
The cars in there as well.
Time, from time to time. They had a red trailer in there which got sold, so that's not in there anymore.
EMS had it?
Yeah.
Red trailer, what was that for?
It, it had Casoot County Emergency Response Trailer on the side, it was purchased by the Casoot County EMS Association. The intent behind it was that it would be brought.
I'm more, yeah, I, I remember that.
Yeah, that it would be brought to fires and stuff.
I wondered why EMS ordered.
Because they use money from donations and fundraisers to purchase something. Because the, the thought and the plan behind it was that it would be brought to things like fires where EMS staff have to be on scene by law. To be there and monitor the firefighters, so then they could have all the records for firefighters baseline vitals. And then they could be in a warm trailer instead of operating out of the back of the ambulance. So that's what it was intended for. I don't know if it got used quite as much as it could have, but, um, that was the intent of the trailer.
Okay.
But it's not in there anymore.
I don't know how mu, I don't know how much that building is worth either, too, I mean. I know we've put a lot of money into it, but since, since we have bought, well.
Hundred plus.
Hundred plus. Uh, yeah, again, I don't know how much it's worth. Sell it and put up a more building and I don't know, I probably shouldn't say that either.
That's a losing proposition probably.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like selling your house and saying you're gonna move into a condo with the same money.
Yeah, yeah.
Except the house doesn't sell for quite what you thought it was going to, the condo is quite, is more than you thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, if, uh, out, outside of getting somebody to tell you what it's worth. Uh, you're just, you're just a stab in the dark, so you, what's your goal? Start low and go up or start high and go down? And can they afford it?
Mm-hmm.
Answer the questions, pick, pick a number.
Twenty thousand isn't unreasonable.
It's probably not. It's probably not, in our reality.
If we're putting that away each year, yeah.
Now, even if we use five thousand, if it's for a small repair, you're still putting fifteen of it away. If you use ten thousand, ten thousand.
And then when the big one comes, you have a cushion.
I think it's wise to plan, that's a big building. Big building.
Yeah, no, the skating.
Most of the bigger bills are probably not gonna be small there.
Right, right.
Considering area, it's rough on our, yeah, that's a good chunk of change, just get people up there.
They put a crane and all those type of.
Yeah. Yeah.
Things, yeah.
So, we charge E nine one one hundred and sixty-six dollars. You know, in a month is what it would come out to in rent, and then.
Could be two thousand a year.
Yeah, because you would do it every year.
Well, I'm I'm with twenty thousand number.
Yeah, ten percent, ten percent of twenty thousand.
It would be two thousand per year for you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but I'm saying, if you, for monthly rent, it would come out to a hundred and sixty-six or so, and then the other.
They could just pay it once, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, and and the other two is seven hundred and fifty bucks a month.
Yeah, that's, that's still, you're not gonna rent a building like that.
No.
I mean, not that we're comparing to private sector, but we're, we're not even.
No, and we're also housing stuff that's supposed to benefit Cassuth County and its residents, so you gotta be mindful of that as well.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we need to remind people that it's not for us to make a profit on, it's for us to set aside.
Yes.
For.
For me.
So that they can keep having that building, I mean, really, it's just going right back into the building that they're upkeeping.
Make it's in repairs. Exactly. Yep.
That they're.
Or that they're using, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we can only add so so much.
Yeah.
And that should make it easier, even if it's a little bit of whatever right now, it should make it easier on them in the long haul to know that. Money's being put aside to maintain that.
Well, and then they don't have to budget for those items, because that's in our, that's in the budget for the.
Yep. Okay.
Sounds like a general direction at least, yeah.
Got a consensus? In somewhat?
I think so.
Or at least a a discussion point for them?
Yeah.
We're gonna have to, you know. Or do we just tell them forty-five, forty-five, ten, enough arguing?
We can do that too, we just gave them the option to work that out, and I guess they haven't yet, so.
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to be a pushy man, just in in.
I know, you gotta get it done at some point.
Gotta get it done, so I don't know if it's. If we have them on Tuesday and we say this is what we think, I mean, do you have a different plan, and if not, we're going forward.
Sounds fine to me.
Yeah, it shouldn't have to be a three hour conversation.
No, it shouldn't be.
So, we're talking the.
Copy of the rental agreement that Todd.
Do you want what?
My copy of the rental agreement that Todd drew up for Tuesday then.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good, yep, yep.
Yeah. And then we could send that out to the other. Uh, Phil.
They already have it, they've already been given all of it.
Might. Yeah, might wanna send him another copy, just so that, because that way they're not going through and like. I don't remember seeing that email and trying to find it and everything, it might just be.
Not that that ever happens, yeah, yeah.
Well, this is something for us to consider, and honestly, please, let's not spend more than five minutes on it, because it's just something for us to consider, something that I learned. Um, is that the county's portion of EMA could come out of general supplemental. It already comes out general basic, doesn't it?
Of EMA?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's general, so.
Some comes out of.
Oh, it's not, it's not general basic?
Let me look.
Okay, well, then never mind.
I'm pretty sure we.
Conversation we don't have to have then.
I'm pretty sure we switched.
Because I was like, that's a really good idea, until I saw the general supplemental.
I'm pretty sure that we talked about that last year.
Yeah, yeah, the revenue side, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Civil funds.
Okay, moving.
I think there's, there's something else that is listed on our, um. Our allocation sheet that comes from our.
Non-departmental, I'm guessing.
Well, that's the revenue side, okay, we need to look at the, we need to look at non-departmental.
Non-departmental side, yeah.
For the.
It's page one of non-departmental, bottom of the page, it's coming out of supplemental.
It is, yeah.
Yep.
Done, okay, well, never mind.
Good thought.
See, that switched last year.
It's actually good that it is, though.
Right.
I was thinking it was general basic.
It is, because it's, because it's. Because it's ineligible use, but we switched that last year.
It is, yeah, and that's, that's good, because it's less strain out of our general basic fund, yeah, well, gosh, that was good talk.
We didn't spend five hundred thousand.
I'm sorry.
The other thing, though, that I've learned, which ob- obviously our general supplemental can't afford it, but the other thing that could come out of general supplemental, unless you're gonna tell me it already is.
We might.
Is, um. Let me think, the county's share of the LAC, so like that portion of the dispatch. That could come out of there, like what the sheriff pays, that is an eligible expense to come out of.
Supplemental?
Or, who was that?
Under what part of that, I'm gonna try and.
I'm talking without having all my thoughts ready. It could be.
What's the code section on that, I don't.
I think they call that verbal processing.
It, well, but obviously our supplemental can't afford it. But um it would be something to think about if we were in a good position supplemental wise, and we could switch over if we were worried about our general basic fund.
Is that like eighty-six or something?
I don't remember, I didn't bring that stuff either. But somehow, some way. It could be budgeted for. Or was it budgeted for through EMA, I don't know. My thought is it didn't seem to have set anything.
I.
Well, we're not gonna do that now anyway.
No, we're not, we're not, but it's, you know, it was interesting to learn that, that, you know, that was something we could switch around if we needed to be.
No, it's good. Good to know.
Yep.
If we saw our general supplemental fund, I was like, oh boy, we can't do that.
Yeah. Well, we got through E nine one one and. Good discussion on related matters, uh what's, what was next on your notes?
Engineer.
Engineer, is there something left to discuss?
The opening in his department, I thought somebody said.
Um. Yeah, as far as um administration, I, yeah, I did visit with him about that.
Okay, so we don't, his budget's good, then we don't need to change anything for budget?
Yeah, um. I don't think so.
Not hearing.
Uh, anything in the engineer, yeah.
We, we had talked about, I brought up equipment versus road construction, um, I think there's. Some bigger purchases in there, like the. I think I used the snow blower as an example, but um I'd rather see roads constructed than. A huge purchase of equipment again, but.
Either way, I think the argument's gonna be, you're behind on one thing or the other. But, and again. As long as, well, they're different service areas, aren't they? Um, equipment and construction, they're different service areas, aren't they?
No, they're different, they are different line items in the budget, but it's all.
Or no? But as long as he doesn't go over in the bottom line there, he can interchange them if needed.
Which. Right.
I mean, obviously, the goal is that you budget for a reason, but.
I mean. Yeah, I think I, I don't know if it's the current budget we're in or the last budget we completed, I think I'd say that too, we. Spent more than we budgeted for new equipment and. I'd, I'd rather see roads built, but.
I do agree, there's more options for what to do with equipment than there is for, uh, you know, you can. You can. Get by a few years with. Equipment would be better, and you can get by a few years of the road sometimes, but sometimes you can't, sometimes it's worse the other way. I don't know, that's.
You work to get ahead in one area, you're gonna get behind in another.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, so I don't know.
So then the conversation about the, you know, advertising for replacing Adam, I mean, that's, we're not talking about that, I mean.
Well, so, so I went down and visited with Doug about that. Um. And he. Said, because I've had that concern from the public a lot, you know, why, why do we have that many engineers in office, or whatever, but. Um, in discussions with Doug, the cost of design fee and. Inspection and and all that kind of stuff associated with hiring an outside engineering firm, say you build a bridge for six hundred thousand. It's gonna be sixty thousand in engineering to do that, it's a ten percent fee. Um, as as an example, is what he was throwing out, his numbers that he's heard, um, and so you do two projects in a year, there's your engineering house. So that was his reasoning um for having that position. Also, in discussing, it wouldn't be hiring. Exactly Adam's position back, be looking for engineer tech versus.
Everybody ratchets up.
And and so, I mean, it's starting back at the bottom.
Yeah, where, kinda where Adam probably started.
And and maybe, yeah, yeah.
But theoretically, it's the same pay.
No, it'd be, it'd be in, probably in the sixties.
No, actually, it's less.
I understand that, but if, but if everybody's moving up, if everybody's ratcheting up.
Over time, over time, yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah, I I don't know how quickly that all ratchets up, but.
I don't either.
Well, there was a scale he gave us, I don't know.
And and that's you, the scale is also based on your certification, I mean, you don't, as, say you're an engineer tech, you don't suddenly get paid to be.
Yeah.
You know, as if you were a professional engineer.
Right.
Because that's a two-year degree, um, but it it's how you better yourself while working there too, yeah.
Well, and I think too, that that often is said, I mean, honestly, it really is, why do we need so many engineers in that office, and. You know, I I can't answer that question, and if honestly, if it's something we wanna know, we just need to ask. We just need to ask Doug and say, you know, this is asked of us, what do you guys do?
Yeah.
Like you found out, like some things, and it was like, oh, okay, well, I mean. You know, I I don't, I don't know what all the people do, nor do I feel like I necessarily need to know everything that they do. I don't know.
Well, I think one thing that maybe ties in there, I guess. Kind of was brought up earlier today with the coordinator, um, the other responsibilities that have been placed on that office, I mean, we. Could talk about health insurance as one, I, I don't know why that's.
Did have zoning, and but we've changed that.
I mean, yeah, and that's another one, but um. To help that department focus on the actual task at hand of our road system, um, maybe health insurance is another thing that we need to look at. And have. Others, HR or whatever handle that, because that's.
That department, yeah, it is, it is, but that department handled it from the very beginning.
Time commitment, either way.
Trish used to do it, didn't she?
And, yeah, they, well, yeah, Trish and and Richard, Richard, Richard was part of that, and then it went to Doug.
Yep.
But that department has done that from the very beginning, and honestly, they've done a very, very good job, I guess. Sometimes be careful what you wish for and change, because it's not always a good thing, and it's. It's a big deal, and it takes a lot to understand all of those. Different pieces, they kind of got it down pat, why would we change it?
I think that.
Doug's the perfect person for that, because he's detail oriented and he's very organized, and he's good with charts and spreadsheets, and you have to have somebody.
He likes his spreadsheets.
He's, you have to have somebody that's really good and likes to do that stuff, and that's hard to find somebody that does it that well.
Yeah. And is going to keep doing it as well as it's been done, not saying they can't, but I mean, why change something that's not broken?
Don't fix what ain't broke?
Yeah, unless he came to us and said literally, we can't keep doing this, okay, that's a different conversation, but I haven't heard that from him, so I, I don't think we should change it.
Well, and that's kinda what happened with zoning too, came to it and he gave us the minutes and said. Here, uh, this was supposed to be a two-month temporary thing back in two thousand twelve, and and here our office is still doing it, so. We were a little more proactive in changing that, um. So, I.
And if he's free from that, maybe this, it's, I don't know.
That should free up a little bit too, but yeah, yeah. And with the ADA, yeah, they should be fine, but. Anyway, I'm not sure how that affects the budget discussion at the moment or not.
What?
Well, we were just.
Oh, just making sure that we weren't talking about that, you know, we weren't.
Yeah. Right, right.
We were not gonna talk about not replacing somebody, basically, as well as.
And who knows what the board, I mean, Donna's position has changed significantly, as far as how that is, how that role looks and. What she's doing and, you know, someday when Donna would retire, what the board decides to do with that, if it. Looks different, if, I mean, that that position can change too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I finally found supplemental code section. Blank out, I mean, that's fine, but um, what section were you talking about that we could pay the law enforcement stuff out of, Andrew?
So.
I don't know, I was just saying there was discussion about it, and I found that intriguing, and I thought, oh, that would free up money in the general basic.
Mm-hmm.
I thought law enforcement center expense, well, they didn't call it law enforcement center expenses, they called it dispatch. Dispatch expenses.
We can do stuff for court expenses, um. I don't have dispatches.
Well, we can look for that, but we're not gonna change that.
We're not gonna do it anyway, it's okay, I was just basically.
Yeah. That's good information to know, though, yeah, look into any at least.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, after engineer?
Um, fair, so um I put the fair budget in your board folders with the changes that we made, if you wanna look at those.
Okay, oh, that's fair.
Don't worry, you'll pick up on more dad jokes as time goes on.
Um, oh, they're in the computer, you changed, okay, not in here. Okay, yep. Alright.
It looks good.
What we talked about, so, okay, next?
Next is mental health, same thing, it should be in your folders, I also put in your folders, um. The worksheets, the budget worksheets, um, to show you that that has a negative balance, because we haven't budgeted any.
Mm-hmm.
Income coming in, um, and because that is its own separate fund. Um, we're gonna have to take a look at that, but I think we're gonna kinda have to wait until after the meeting on February twentieth, because. O three thousand was designed as a fund that's reimbursement for the region, so we're gonna have to s- see if they're gonna leave that fund stay the same. It'd be. Depending on how they want us to set it up, because that, those are questions we haven't had answered yet, so. If we're gonna keep it out of O three thousand, we're gonna have to put in some kind of revenue.
Yeah. Which we will get or we won't get.
We don't know.
Well, if we don't get it and we spend the money, we're over, and that's not a good place to be.
No, exactly. That's why we, hopefully, we'll get answers on the twentieth at this call.
Thursday, the twentieth, yeah, next week.
They should like to keep us on our toes.
So.
So, there's that, so.
Not much we can do there today.
No.
Till we get more answers.
Yes. And then the next I had was planning and. And then the next they had was planning and zoning.
Oh, was that with fees?
The fees for the revenue, if somebody wanted to revisit that.
Application fee raises through the board of adjustments.
Even if we make any changes to fees, I wouldn't mess with the budget for the revenue side of things because.
Mess with it next year, if we do change the fees, let's see that we're getting more money?
Yeah. Yeah, see after, I would adjust it after actuals, I, I wouldn't, I don't know.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I wouldn't wanna talk about raising the budget on revenue and then not have it come in, cause we don't actually raise fees or whatever.
Yep. Yep. That's fire. All right. Next?
Um, order supervisors, I think that's in your board folder too. Just the change of taking the wax out, changing that to zero, adding five thousand to arbitration to make it ten thousand.
Yep. Due to the bargaining units. Okay.
And that's all. That's it.
Okay. So then, with our fund balances and what things are gonna look like. What are, how much are taxes going up?
So it kind of shows you in that. Fund balance worksheet. I don't have it up, let me pull it up. What the fund balances will be at.
And what levy rate?
Where's that at?
And what are levy rates?
What levy rate do you have for general supplemental?
Um, I don't remember.
Budget and then budget fund balance worksheet.
Uh, it hasn't changed, um, I can't remember, hold on, let me get it.
Seven dollars seventy?
I think so, but let me get it.
I thought that's what we were talking before.
With the general supplemental being that low, we're still at thirty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Crazy. Okay, why does rural face?
Look like what?
What's the two hundred fifty-three percent? You go to rural services. Maybe I'm, maybe that isn't even what they're supposed to be. I mean.
That doesn't deal with the, no. No.
That, that is probably two hundred fifty-three percent of the expenditures. Like if you look at. General basic, ending fund balance would be forty-three point two five percent, but. Rural, you have expend, direct expenditures and you have transfers, so. It doesn't look like that's factored in, but I'm guessing.
Yeah, that's separate, they do that also.
Nine, four, five times. Two point five. Yeah, it's, so it's saying two hundred fifty-three percent of expenditure, so you're paying fund balance, but you can't quite look at that because.
What if, what if we don't take the? Oh, yeah, no, we don't want that either.
It, it's, it's not something you can compare to that, it needs to be a percent of, you know, expenditures and transfers out. So really, it'd be a little four point one million. It'd be a little over twenty-five percent.
So yes, general supplemental is at a dollar seventy.
A dollar seventy?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what it was at last year?
Last year, I think it was at a dollar sixty. I don't know, I can't remember.
So, so you put that dollar in, a dollar seventy, or you, yeah?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Because of our ending fund balance, or, yeah?
And we're still going from one point six, almost one point seven to one point three and a half. So, we're dropping fund balance pretty good and still raising taxes, almost three hundred thousand.
Yeah, that was kind of, that was, that's kind of scary, but maybe we'll end better. Maybe, kind of helpful.
I don't think any of those expenses are really variable, that's health insurance, a lot of that and property insurance is the other side. Are another big piece. I guess. That kinda ties to health insurance, like, I mean, we talked to fifteen percent increase, but. Are we just expecting the taxpayers to absorb all of that, or? Who's paying that bill, cause, I mean, I didn't open that can of worms when I thought we were talking about other. Plan changes and stuff and, I guess, now that that's kind of been. Put to rest for now. Who's paying that bill?
No. I think we still need to look at, um.
The taxpayers are paying every bill.
And we still need to look at Doug's spreadsheet. You know, to see the different scenarios.
Yep.
If I were to.
That was very helpful. I thought, I found it to be helpful.
Yeah, I, I think I asked for it before, but he just gave us a condensed version. I'd like the full thing though.
I like the, whatever he puts up there, that big, and then we say, hey, well, what if we did that, and then he puts in the number and changes it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I would like to, I, I would like us to see that.
Can, can we finish going through the levies where we're gonna be with general and rural too? Just, just so I know.
Like what the levy amounts are?
What the levy rate change is gonna be and what are fund balance differences?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, general basic is gonna be three point four six five three five. And that's set by House File seven eighteen, cause we grew too much, so we reduced.
Three point four three five six five?
Three point four six five three five.
And that's up.
That's down.
Down, or down, excuse me.
The rate that's down, the total dollars are still up.
Yeah, so we were at three point five last year, that's the max.
Right.
And our rural basic is at one point five three three six eight, that's also maxed.
One point five three six eight?
Three three six eight.
Say please one more time.
Sure, one point five three three six eight.
Okay, thank you.
That, that's our max based on our growth and that is down from last year.
And what was it last year?
I don't have that written down right here.
Okay, that's fine, that, that was rural basic, right?
Yes.
Yep.
And our general supplemental you said is one point seven?
Yep.
Yes.
Up from one point six.
That, that's just what I put in that, you can change it to whatever, that's just the starting point.
Right, right.
Are there any other ones?
Um, EMS seventy-five cents, and then assessor, what, yeah.
Yeah, that was.
I was not changing. Yeah, I don't think there's any others to really. Adjust, so.
What was rural basic last year? One point five three three.
No, that's this year.
That's this, oh, excuse me.
I don't know, I don't have it with.
Oh, okay. Why, I was just, I was just curious what are.
It's, it's down from last year.
What, uh, how much taxes are going up, was what I'm getting at?
Well. The rates, tax rates for rural and basic are down, of course, the amount's gonna be up cause valuations are up, so it depends what they're asking. Are they asking dollar amounts, are they asking what their tax levy rates gonna be?
And not everybody.
Cause they're two different things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
And people get that confused.
Yeah.
And not every property goes up exactly the same.
No.
Well, I just, I just wanna know, cause, well, for example, last year, had organizations like Farm Bureau and whoever else that. Sent out stuff of, it's going up X amount and.
That's because they based it off of.
I just, I wanna know what, what the actual number is, like, if they know this is.
That's because what they went off of was that tax levy notice that was sent out.
Right, and I understand that, yeah.
That takes one property and it shows what the percentage is on that property, they're gonna get the same thing again.
Right.
But it's not based on what. The difference is, it's based on one property valued at one amount.
Yeah.
So, it, it's not, not a fair comparison necessarily.
Right.
The only thing that's gonna go up as far as tax levy rate is general supplemental. And if it was at a dollar sixty, I can go get my book and look. And see what we were at last year.
Yeah, how much more is that?
Ten or twenty cents at the most.
Yeah, gonna, yeah.
So, based on. My math here for general basic, general supplemental and rural basic. Total dollar percentage increase is probably going up about four and a half percent. And that's just on specific total dollars collected from property tax only. Cause it's increasing four hundred and seventy thousand over last year.
So last year was a dollar sixty.
Okay.
A dollar sixty for general supplemental last year.
Dollar.
Per thousand.
And the rural basic was, you got that with you too?
Three point five.
We're down from last year, so last year, rural basic was. Ah, a dollar fifty, one point five four nine oh two. And this year, we're at one point five three three six eight.
What did we generate last year for property taxes at the one point six?
We generated two million six hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars.
Oh, yeah, it's right there, yeah, and it's now it's two point eight.
Yeah.
So it's not, not a huge amount.
So that's.
Well, while you were gone.
It was a bigger jump last year.
I was told by his math, as far as total dollar increase, property taxes would be going up about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars between three levies. Four, four and a half, four and a half percent.
For dollar math?
To- total gross dollars, general basic, general supplemental and rural basic, um, last year.
Twenty-six million, about here.
Um.
So it's in the column?
It's the third number now.
In the middle, two points, yep.
Yep. So if you add up all the property taxes collected for twenty-four, twenty-five in the reestimated column, for those three. Versus the total of twenty-five, twenty-six that's proposed for the property taxes. That comes up with a difference of four seventy, zero, eight, nine.
I know we've talked about the number extensively, but these numbers are all based on a total valuation. And what's that total valuation number?
For, um, valuation, well, for, for which, for general basic or rural?
It's different.
It's different.
General and rural have two, uh, different valuations, because the rural is not, then rural is not counting town, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
General.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Unincorporated area.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So what's the general number?
Um, with gas and electric is one, seven, two, three, two, six, one, two, seven, five. Without gas and electric, one, six, four, one, six, five, two, eight, six, six. That's last year, I'm sorry, do you want this year's? Look, still have last year's book.
Now that it's printed in.
Yeah. Sorry.
Now you can do a comparison.
Um, let's see, gotta go back here, didn't.
This is for what number?
This is valuation.
Oh, evaluation number, yeah.
I don't know if I put that in here, hold on.
Oh, you have a spreadsheet in the front, that is it?
Yeah, it's your evaluation history, I don't know if I put this year's in there or not, but.
And for, this is for general or for rural?
General.
Levy anyway, levy history. Yeah, evaluations are in there, oh, but you don't have twenty-five, twenty-six in there.
Yeah, I might not have twenty-five, twenty-six in there. Okay, so let me go here, hold on.
You keep looking, is somebody, could somebody else answer the question, why we differentiate between the gas and electric, are they at a different rate or something, or?
I was gonna ask.
They, they pay differently.
It's the difference between, um, what you get back in, um. Not refunds, what's it called?
Rebates?
No.
Credits?
Credits, yeah.
Credits. That's fine, just looked in here, the levy, the levy rates were right here, three point five, one point six. One point five four nine oh two. Shouldn't have to go get her book.
Okay, so. Valuation this year for. General basic is for, with gas and electric is one, seven, eight, two, zero, nine, four, zero, seven, six. Without gas and electric is one, seven, zero, zero, one, five, nine, eight, one, zero. And rural. With gas and electric, one, three, eight, seven, six, four, three, eight, zero, one. Without, one, three, zero, eight, six, three, three, five, eight, four.
And there's rollbacks to all that, or that is the rollback?
That's with the rollbacks.
So I'm, I'm sure this could go right up there to the top, stupid questions. So when you're talking about. One point seven, whatever billion in this general, so you, so a dime. I'm sure I'm skipping a beat here, it's getting late, right, but a dime.
It's a dime per thousand of value.
Right, so you gotta take that across the four zeros. And I just gave you the hundred and seventy thousand, okay, all right, thank you.
Connect a couple dots there, maybe.
Is there a way? To see, um. You know, like I know how we have it by department here, where they have the one thousand and O two thousand. And O two thousand obviously is the one where talking about raising, is there a way to print something that just is like. So you can see it, the comparison across the board for O two thousand and just print the, uh, budget worksheet just for O two thousand. And maybe not even print it, but put it on our screen.
Yeah, so.
And do it by that fund, just so we can say, oh, okay, look, maybe, here's, you know, why this one up, this one up, this one up.
So. You mean, will you come here a second, please?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you mean like this? Or are you looking for more detail?
Um, I'm looking at like a budget worksheet, you know, so like instead of printing it by. A department.
A department, you print it by the O two thousand fund?
I'm guessing you're looking to compare back in like twenty-three, twenty-four when we had. Two point three million in expenditures out of general supplemental versus now twenty-five, twenty-six, we're at. Three point four or five, that, to see what changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, one of those, we already talked about emergency management, yeah.
Well, yeah, but that's only a hundred and sixty. I, I shouldn't say only, but that's a hundred and sixty thousand.
The other one, another big one would be property insurance that went up a hundred and fifty thousand last year.
It's gonna break it down by each department?
Yeah.
Like that?
Yep.
Um, I can email it to you, so if you want me to print it.
Uh, you can email it.
If you have it in a PDF, can you just throw it in our board folder?
Yeah.
And then, then we can all grab it from the same place.
Yep.
Cause property insurance, I think we flipped that from general basic to supplemental last year too. That would have been a big chunk. That would have been six hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah.
So.
What do you want me to call it?
Oh, I don't know, just probably.
From a general supplemental expenditures or something.
Yeah, just general supplemental, whatever, worksheet.
Okay, it should be there.
Is it under budget?
Uh, no, I just put it in that. I think, I don't think I put it in budget, I think I just put it in there, sorry.
In today's?
So, um, if you owe your board meeting for today, it's in there, it's listed. There you go.
Or am I not, or is it? You gotta go.
Right there.
Oh, I see.
I didn't put it in budget.
And it can be moved there.
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
There are ways to see the whole thing on the whole screen instead of having to scroll across the bottom.
Yeah. And you get replusters.
What did you say, Josh?
So he's confusing us.
Oh.
Okay.
We were looking for it under the budget folder and it wasn't there. You can also click the X on the left side and get rid of that little bar that comes up.
I did that, and then I still was quite there.
Okay.
So what are you getting out of this? Help me out.
I'm just trying to see everything that comes out of that fund. To, to look at it and figure out, I'm not trying to figure out anything, I just wanna see things just in that fund instead of flipping through all the. Sheets. Since that levy was going up.
The auditor costs us more since twenty twenty-one.
No, elections.
I'm not sure she's in the mood.
With the elections, you mean?
I remember that earlier than day prior.
Forget what I said. I mean, a lot of this.
Cause it's FICA, IFRS, yeah, and health insurance, so every department's gonna be like that. So there, Carter.
Well, and I.
Lesson learned.
So on page twenty-nine, you would have courthouse expense liability. That's where last year twenty-four, twenty-five removed the entire ICAP bill into there, which wasn't there previously, that's. Six, six, six oh one, and we paid five ninety-seven after, I think. That might have been after we changed our deductibles. It didn't move it a whole lot, but it did move it a little bit. Um, but then we've got another ten percent increase on that this year. And the other insurance of all kind went from forty thousand to a hundred and seventy, so.
Why would, like, I'm just mainly just looking at the percentages of differences, just to see. So why would like IFRS for the sheriff go up forty, almost forty-eight percent?
They did increase the rate that we have to.
Yeah, it's nine point, it used to be, yeah, it's, so it used to be.
But doubled, cause it's like forty-eight percent.
Yeah, it, it's now, um, twelve point oh nine percent. And last year, I wanna say it was like eight something last year.
I think that was quite a bit of an increase.
So, okay. Yeah, twelve point oh nine this year, after July first.
And when did we add?
So why would there have been less than what the rank file, the rank file costs is about ten percent, right, for IFRS?
Well, it's, it's nine point four four for regular.
Okay.
It's nine point three one for jail and the sheriff is twelve point zero nine.
And you're saying last year the sheriff was less than the regular employee, it was eight something? How did that work out? How did that work out?
I think they, I think they all were on the same page.
No, uh-uh, they've always been different for the sheriff's office, it's always been different.
Sheriff versus jail, you mean?
Sheriff versus everybody else, no, the, no, I'm talking deputies versus everybody else. It's always been different.
I don't know.
Oh, this isn't the right book you had last year, isn't it? I can go grab it, see what it was last year.
Their depart, well, they're by department numbers, so their department, five, oh, five, so you guys scroll up, so that last two digit number.
They're watched, they need to be left in luck. Yeah, I don't want to say.
We really save the money, right?
So yeah, keep going, cause you're.
What would you pay six dollars for? IFRS apparently. Oh, I see, okay, alright. Like who turned it in? Like six dollars for an I L G something? That was, uh, remember.
Did maybe go up or is that the first of the, oh, but yeah.
Sanitarium, they had, on the line, and there was like a, a one dollar. Charge there for something. Oh.
Percent, that.
That's right. Something with the supply. That's right.
Last year, the sheriff's office was eight point five percent.
This isn't the sheriff himself, or is it?
Eight point five one, I don't think she.
This would be under. That's just FICA, that's FICA, and then it goes FICA, and then. I first, that, that number is what I was just looking at. I was just scrolling through and I was trying to pick on them, I was scrolling through, was looking at big.
Last year, the sheriff's office, sheriff's office, not jail, was at eight point five one percent.
Now it's at.
Twelve point zero nine.
About fifty percent.
Yeah.
And the jail and the deputies are different amounts, they are separate.
Well, for, for a four percent raise for everyone, I mean, have we calculated at all? What is that total dollar figure in just in, in raises for this year?
I have not.
If we're going up four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, oh, we're doing three levies, I bet you that's majority of that.
That health insurance.
And then you add health insurance in there, and that's, that's pretty much your, your increase.
Well, yeah, and insurance, the insurance was like sixty some thousand.
That's what I mean, yeah, just raised, raised it in insurance.
The other.
General property.
Last year, we're calculating a two percent raise, it was like a hundred and ninety thousand. So I mean, that makes sense, if we want a four percent, that'd be the four hundred. Yep, there you go.
So, so was your point that we're, we're looking good, or, or, or?
Well, I'm saying if we're, if we're wondering at all where that increase is coming from, that's where it is, yeah.
We have health insurance in the raises, that's eight dollars up in a hurry.
Yep. Have a lot of employees, and, yeah, that's it. Anything else on the fund balances, or? Were we gonna have a drainage conversation at all? I know was mentioned.
We probably should.
Minnesota thing, or what?
No, no, about, uh, about drainage positions here within the county.
We probably should have an actual workshop.
Workshop on that.
What do you mean drainage positions within the county?
As far as its own department, that was, that's been thrown out. I know there was desire to have that discussion.
I thought that last year too.
So I didn't know if that was still something people wanted to discuss or not, or?
So drainage under the Iowa code is managed by the auditor.
Right. Well, but under, there's, there's a number of counties that have. A drainage, different drainage employees department, whatever you wanna call it.
But there's still responsibilities that fall under the auditor.
Sure.
So.
Hey, this discussion still needs to be had, though, as far as how to proceed with that.
Yeah, um. I don't know if we.
Well, I can tell you one thing that I get concerned about is kinda like the discussion today, trying to figure out. Oh, what do I do here? Do I, it's over the fifty, it's under the fifty, okay, well, who are the people it's affecting and the, um. If I make a decision, I'm making it for all of you. You know what I mean?
Yep.
It's tough. We have so much drainage here in the county, but it's, it's just tough. I feel like. I don't even know how to say it. I just feel like we need more. Not necessarily take it away from you. That was never like an intention or anything like that. But we need someone who understands going out and, you know, who we can even take with us and say, okay, let's go out and look at this. Someone that we can lean on, because I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm petrified to make a wrong decision about drainage. It's not saying I can't learn, I can't do, but I am really scared to make a wrong decision because it affects a lot of people. And a lot of people's, you know, pocketbooks, and we have a lot of drainage. So, my thought, this was before I was even a supervisor, and, and it, the honest, it was just a thought, and I was sitting there thinking, oh my gosh. I'm in this thing, oh, this drainage thing is a big deal. My thoughts were, and I never talked about this to anybody. So I'm kinda throwing Doug out there, but my thoughts were, why couldn't we have an engineer down in the engineer's office? That deals with drainage and helps with that process. Now Kyle has said something about it being a conflict, okay, well, I didn't know any of that stuff, but that was my thoughts before even. Being in this position, like, oh my gosh, we, we need something like that for the county. Uh, how to go about it, I have no idea.
Yeah, and I said that last year when we talked about, we had, I don't remember how many discussions we had on workshops on drainage. With all the, um, questions and situations that arose last year. Um, I said it then, I'll say it again, I, I do think we need to look at having, um. In-house that directly handles that. There are other examples of that out there, and I guess. I, I don't know that it's a s- specific budget issue, cause I think that, I don't know if it. Would need to be its own department or whatever, but, um, or if it'd be a non-departmental type thing, but. I know I asked a lot of those questions last year and, um. Had done a lot of research, and I don't have any notes handy today, but, um. I do think we need to look at making some changes in that regard.
Well, I don't know, that would be in its own department, I mean, it'd be kinda like a subdepartment, if that makes sense. Kind, similar to how like GIS, it still falls under the auditor's office, but then you have like your, um. Drainage department that would still fall under by code, because that's what you're saying, the code is, is that it would fall under the auditor's. Or office, so.
Some of the things that the auditor is responsible for.
Right, right, so that's what.
Certain things with that, but, and I, I do not have that code section memorized, but I think a lot of that is in regards to. Records and records management and that type of stuff, um. I, I think what I have in mind is a little bit above and beyond that, um.
Looking at today, even with Faribault County being down here. The, the lady who was speaking primarily, that she's their, their drainage person.
She's very knowledgeable, I thought.
And she, there's an office of, there's three people in the office up there that just deal with drainage in Faribault County.
Yep.
Now, do they engineer the drainage stuff in-house, or do they still use?
They, they do a lot of. I don't think they have an actual engineer in-house, but they do a lot of surveying and, and. They do a lot of televising, which I've done more and more of that as the last couple of years have gone on. But I don't think they do full engineering of projects, but they do, like she said, I mean, they push their repair limit. As close as they can, and they do as much of that without actually hiring an outside engineer.
Pocahontas has a drainage engineer.
They do?
Pocahontas County, they have a drainage guy down there.
And how do they handle that?
I don't know, I should, I need to, people need to talk to them.
Well, I just think it's good, it, it'd be good, it's a big, it's a big deal for Cassuth County. It's a big deal for Cassuth County.
Compared to the whole state, we've got more than most.
And I don't know how it would look. But I know going forward, we need to do a bit better. And we need to, um. I don't know, I, I had to say the different kind of style of bookkeeping, um, but I think it needs to be more than one person. I do, it's a lot. There has to be someone who can manage the, the book part, but then also have somebody. Who is more in-depth about those books, that can make sure that that is being done accurately. Because, you know, I can, I guess I can speak for when I was the auditor, it's just too hard, the auditor can't do it. But maybe you think you can, and that's all great, but it's a lot. It is a lot, and it's a lot of responsibility. And it's just too hard for. You know, the auditor to know everything that goes into that when she's busy doing every, everything else, you know, other things. It's a big, it's just a big deal. What are you looking up?
The color for. Some of the technicals I'd say.
I think Tammy, what are your thoughts? I mean, do you think that it needs more, um. More hands?
I don't know what I think. I guess I wish you would have talked to me about this before, not you, Amber, everybody else sitting here.
I haven't really talked much about it. I remember the conversation that was brought up at one point. That was months ago.
I I don't think, I don't think anything I said should have been any sort of a surprise. I said it publicly in board meetings last year.
A year ago and now you bring it up today. And I I I don't, haven't even had time to process it or think about it. I don't know what I think.
We're just starting the conversation here and if it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't go anywhere, but it it's worth the conversation.
I think it's worth conversation. I think it's worth a conversation to try and figure out if there is another county that does it, how it's structured.
And is there a couple that share, was it?
Yeah, yeah, there is one of them, but there's two others that are joint with them. And I.
I'll go ahead and write it or if you do.
Oh, no, no, you didn't. I was just trying to think because since we deal with, since we have um drainage with Palo Alto. I don't know the other ones. I don't know all the ones.
I know Emmett, Abeg.
They're joined with all of them, yeah.
Is it something, I mean, so we're not there of course, but is it something that a discussion could be had there if they feel like there's a need for that too in there? And be kind of a shared thing, but obviously you don't want to spread someone too thin either.
I think it can and probably should be a joint effort in that regard. I I do think from some other conversations I've had even a little bit recently, um, I do think one or more of our neighbors may be interested in some of that. I do know um other counties that just knowing some of their supervisors and relationships that I have with some of them, I feel like some of them would probably entertain a conversation about that. I haven't gotten into the weeds of any of that, but even at our state association meetings or other committee meet- meetings and stuff, I mean, there's, there's lots of things that get talked about um besides what's just on, say, the agenda for ISAC or other meetings and and that has come up again recently.
Well, the big kicker, no matter what, is how are we gonna pay for it?
Well, and in that regard, I mean, like I said last year, the volume of business that our drains kind of historically have had here. Granted, it's not, it's not like setting a tax rate where we know we're gonna have X number of dollars coming in, but I do think there's a level of um, I guess to me, there's a level of confidence I would have that drainage, especially in Cassuth County, isn't just gonna disappear because we've got hundred-plus-year-old infrastructure all over the place. I mean, that stuff, if it doesn't need full improvements, it just somewhere around the county, we're having things fail or need attention all the time. I mean, it's, it's not a random thing here or there to all of a sudden have a project anymore. It's, it's pretty consistent. And I mean, kind of like I said, the stakes are high. There's no doubt about that. There's technical stuff with FEMA that we're still dealing with from nineteen. I mean, to some degree, as as one individual, I I'm doing what I can for my district and all that and I I'm proud of what's been accomplished so far, but it spreads pretty thin, especially with all the other things going on. Um, so.
Well, it's a lot and and I know that not all the supervisors have a ton of drainage and it's kind of scary. You know, when you make a decision, you're making it for all of you if it's under that fifty thousand, but you know, am I qualified to make that decision? That that's the proper way to?
You're not making it for us or you're making it for the drainage district.
Do that repair. Well, exactly, but you guys are also involved though. I mean, I, it's all of us.
Well, and that's, I mean, whether it's a fifty thousand dollar repair that you were talking about today or whether it's a improvement project that we signed a contract for this morning, I mean, what, the the bad part of that is we're all on board representing the county, but the only ones the landowners in that district get a vote for is their representative and that could go both ways, good or bad.
For sure.
But that's just the reality of the situation. We're voted on by our district and and that's just where we're at today.
So possibly asking asking too specific a question, but you're talking about having a person that could do some things. Listen, I listened to the gal from Blue Earth and I heard them say that they do some survey work and all this and that and ta- take that out of Minnesota because I don't know what they do, but if you had that per- that person slash department here, wouldn't that be supplementing what the drainage districts and and the counties pay for as a whole, wouldn't that be supplanting? I think I'd be that word. Money the drainage districts are paying to an engineer now, so.
I think I'm, I think I'm probably able to answer what you're saying. In in some regards, I would kind of look at it as redirecting the dollars that are currently paying outside engineers to pay internal staff and really, we should, in time, especially with a proper workload and some of that, really, we should be able to reduce the rates that those landowners are paying or the districts are paying for engineering because we aren't profiting in the middle. I mean, we're not a private company trying to make a profit, so.
That's not exactly where I was going. It's a good point. That's not where I was going. Where I was going is, can you, can you assess the drainage district the money?
Yeah, yeah, you you definitely can, um, because that would be, that would be a service that would be provided for.
It sounds, it sounds like a sticky wicket.
Yeah, how do you divide that out?
I mean, to some degree, it should be the same. Basically, you would have the so the department or.
So when you're checking with Pocahontas County about what they're doing, find out how they're paying for it and if they're deciding it's it's a county department that benefits the whole county and the whole county base board or if they somehow get revenue back from the.
District, yeah.
Sounds hard. So, not not hard.
And that's, that's a question I have too hard, so, yeah, and I'm definitely gonna ask about that. Yeah, I'll re- I'll reach out to Pocahontas. I know one of the supervisors down there, yeah. See what's up, but. Is it safe to say we're not gonna create that for this budget year?
No.
Yes.
I don't.
I don't know.
Yes, I'll, I'll be honest with everyone I was saying, yeah, it's pretty tough to see that's gonna happen.
Then how are you gonna hire somebody to replace Marge then?
Well, and I don't know, I don't know that we have to have all that figured out today.
No, I'm not saying that you do, but if you're not gonna put it in the fiscal, this next fiscal year budget, are you gonna train somebody and then retrain him again?
Because obviously we're up against that and we need to.
Yeah.
So I, I would want to ask it out loud, so the point is you're gonna make this position more that plus something else?
That's your guys' decision.
Well, I I honestly, I can't speak to how busy it would be if there was an engineer, drainage engineer on staff that can do these things, but we obviously need the drainage clerk. I mean, we obviously need that position and plus it is part of, some of the role is part of Tammy's office and so.
She helps with elections and other stuff too.
Yes, yeah, for sure.
The drainage clerk is, that is the job, that's the full type of job.
Yeah, she does other stuff too.
So the answer's no then. It's not a full-time job.
It's a lot.
It's a lot of it, yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I thought it was. I thought it was even a chance as always.
Yeah.
The other twenty is.
Some of our elections, probably, you know, I don't know, I can't speak for Tammy, but.
Yeah.
I think it would, I think a position like that would be beneficial, but I mean, we absolutely still need the position in the auditor's office.
Yep.
So I don't know how that could be structured, but it's something that maybe get more information from Pocahontas County.
And maybe there are other counties too that have similar situations that.
They still have a drainage clerk, but then they also have the.
I, I don't know.
Department that they can work together or something.
So you mean.
Well, again, I mean, that's the obvious, but if it's almost or or right at a full-time position, you're not gonna get any benefit out of hiring. It's gonna have to be additional to get any more benefit, right? That's the way I'm hearing it talking. And then it comes down to how are you gonna pay for it?
Yeah, yeah, and.
So what, what the position, the drainage clerk now, the the county pays for that for the benefit, the the whole county, rural, urban?
It just comes out of the auditor's budget.
General basic.
Nobody's ever, nobody's ever questioned that financially.
No, drainage is part of the Iowa code, so.
Yep.
This is like other services that not everyone in the county uses, that the county provides.
So where does it say that it's a conflict for Secondary Road to do anything with drainage?
I think especially like when you would get into, say, reclassifications or any of that, Secondary Roads is a benefited landowner in the district and they pay part of the bill. So if they're saying this is how much we're supposed to pay, you have a conflict with the rules of we're paying that bill and.
That sounds pretty weak when you look at the, when you look at the outline of the drainage district, but where you're gonna move that line isn't gonna change.
But it's not, it's not as much of where you move the line, it's how much cost do you assess to that portion of the district.
Is that a, I mean, is that a logical opinion or is that an actual hard fast rule? The reason I ask that is because when I, when I did, was visiting with someone down in Pocahontas County, the drainage guy I mentioned, I asked, I was asking uh just different staffing things and the number of people in their um engineer's office is they have their county engineer, they have an engineer tech, and they have the drainage guy. That's it. Um, so the drainage guy is part of that staff that she's like, well, he's different, but he's in the office, like.
I think it depends on what responsibilities you have to do.
So, again, more questions to ask, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Well, because I was just wondering, because I just remember it historically and I have no idea when it stopped. I don't remember. But Secondary Road used to do repairs?
And they still do. I mean, I I have, I call Scott and say, hey, can you come look at this repair request, you know, especially if it's close to the roadway or something that's small and, you know,
Okay.
and and they, they'll still do that. I don't think they do near as much as they used to, but but they still do that. Some counties have road workers and then drainage crew too. I mean, just every county set up a little different.
Yeah, for sure. Well, I think that's a good conversation to have with Pocahontas County then, since they're doing it.
And it's close and they should have somewhat similar type of drainage, you know, like that we have.
I think Buena Vista and I don't remember the other two counties that are in there. I think they have that set up as a twenty-eighty organization, so kind of like say, C A J D C would be um its its own entity um and and then they can do, I think, everything within that, but I think it mostly comes down, and I don't, I don't remember exactly where been told the conflict, if it was from legal advice or if it was just other discussions with supervisors, but I think it's more based around the financial aspect of um setting people's assessments and and some of that, which is mandatory for improvement projects, repairs not so much, but um, yeah.
Do you need a specific degree to get drainage engineer?
Your engineering license, I don't know if it's separate between water and road, for example, but yeah, you're, you're licensing as a professional engineer.
Yeah, but not necessarily anything specific to drainage clerk.
I don't, I don't have the answer on that.
Well, we'll, we have to revisit that because, you know, we have to have it figured out for the auditor's office. I mean, we, I mean, just gonna need somebody more quicker than later.
Yeah.
I mean, in a perfect world, it'd be nice if those two things would be starting at the same time. And that is a perfect world. Can we strive for a perfect world or not? No?
Green, Green County's got a I T, G I S and drainage, all in one position.
See, and and that's where I'd say, I think it depends on what you expect from a position like that. I mean, it could, it could be anyone if you only have a narrow window of what you're expecting them to do.
I'd say it's a, it's definitely a, it's definitely a good idea.
Well, it's Mississippi.
I just can't quite wrap my brain around how it would work.
Well. As far as this year's budget goes, I mean, we're not really.
I don't think it's something that needs to be addressed today.
Yeah, so, so we can finish our budget discussions and I need to go visit with Brandon before things close here too. For conference board stuff.
Yeah, so the only thing I think we're missing is EMS.
Is that it?
I think so.
And otherwise, we're pretty well done with.
I think so. Do we want Doug to come up and show us his spreadsheet?
Yeah, oh yeah, that'd be beneficial.
I mean, I still think we need to look at that, whether or not anything's changed around is another thing, but I, I think it would be nice just to see that.
Sure.
I don't know how far we're gonna get in twenty minutes or less though.
Oh, not necessarily today. I mean, because I don't think.
Yeah, we could do EMS in that next week.
It'd be nice if we could see the spreadsheet that he's got right now and review it before next week maybe.
Okay, I don't need to see it, but I I figure if I can see it up there and you can explain it, I'm good with that.
Could always send him an email too, if he's got time this week to send it out before next board meeting. Either way. Either way, I don't think we're gonna get through much before four o'clock.
No, yeah, and I didn't need to, but maybe we should just call him and ask him that and so he can be prepared for
Yep.
Tuesday. Will we have time in the morning, Tammy?
I think so. I think there'd be time.
Yep. Okay. Anything else then? For budget today?
I don't think so.
All righty then. Well, at some point, need a motion to adjourn then. Motion by Garmin. I'll second it. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you all. Pick it up again next week. This is good. February eleventh and we're, got a lot done.
I think so too.